I am now following the meeting to order. It is Tuesday at 5:05 PM on November 23rd. We have four board members in attendance. Director Din is attending via Zoom. Director Janine Upton is passing on tonight's meeting. It is his 17th wedding anniversary. Happy anniversary to him. And one of the first orders of business tonight will be to, well, can be first order of business tonight will be to swear in our newly reelected slash elected board members. So we need a motion to establish the agenda.
I will reestablish the agenda as published.
Second. All in favor of establishing the agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. No nays and no hesitations. That happens by vote of four to zero. So the first order of business is going to be Deborah. Referring in to Director Larry.
Right in front?
Where do you want her to stand?
Right in.
Right there.
It's perfect.
Raise your right hand to take me to the office. Can you get your picture? I want to make sure. I state your name. I, Deborah Larry, having been duly elected. Having been duly elected to the Office of Mercer Island School District Number 400, to the Office of Mercer Island School District Number 400, Director Position Number Four, Director Position Number Four, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially, that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of this office, discharge the duties of this office as prescribed by law and to the best of my ability, as prescribed by law and to the best of my ability, and that I will support and maintain, and that I will support and maintain the Constitution of the State of Washington and of the United States of America. The Constitution of the State of Washington and of the United States of America. Congratulations.
And now our newest board member, Daniel Glowit. I guess I asked you to stand.
Could you please raise your right hand, Dan? And repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Dan Glowit.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
The Office of Mercer Island School District.
To the Office of Mercer Island School District.
Number 400, Director Position Number Two.
Number 400, Director Position Number Two.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of this office.
Discharge the duties of this office.
As prescribed by law and to the best of my ability.
As prescribed by law and to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain.
And that I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the State of Washington and of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Washington and of the United States of America.
Congratulations, Mr. Collett. And we are going to, in our usual tradition of both of office, take some pictures.
I think they're just going to have you surround.
Yeah, next.
I would say smile, but.
Oh, right.
There we go. Three, two, one. There we go. Thank you.
Congratulations, Dan.
Thank you.
Technical question. Do you want me to leave this microphone on?
I left. Oh, did you bring yours? I left one up there.
I think I handed one there. Okay.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is public input. And I did want to note that in addition to the 21 people that we have signed up for public input tonight, we've also received more than 35 messages today in support of Dr. Rundell. For the most part, I haven't read the last three messages because they came in in the last few minutes. So I just wanted people to know that those messages have been received and read. And each person is given three minutes to speak. So for those either here or at home, you should buckle in because that's the most public input we've ever had in life on the board. Okay, the meeting, this meeting is a meeting of the board in public. It is not a public meeting that guarantees interaction between members of the public and members of the board. If you would like to address the board on a matter of superintendent succession, please complete the form attached. Blah blah blah. People already done that. On the day of the meeting, when addressing the board at the meeting, please limit your remarks to not more than three minutes. appoint a spokesperson if the concern is a group concern, and if desired, provide written documentation to the board secretary. Public comments that name or otherwise identify a district student are not permitted without permission of that student's parent or legal guardian. The board may direct the superintendent to respond at a later date to the issues expressed. Thank you. Our first public inputter is Dr. Rundell.
What's with the big crowd? I want to begin with just publicly thanking Brian Janini Upton, former director Upton, for his service and leadership on this board. Congratulating Director Larry and our newly elected board member, Dr. or Dan Glowit. The success of a school district is not without the engagement and contribution from its governing board. So tonight, I'd like to provide some perspective on the superintendent's succession. First, I am beyond appreciative of the opportunity to have been contemplated by the Board of Directors to serve as the lead learner of the Mercer Island School District. The private and public endorsements I have received from community members are humbling, and I expect you will hear more this evening. Similarly, I have received criticisms which are part of being an internal candidate. The criticisms are a humble reminder that I have more work to do regardless of my title or the label that I hold. Professionally, all I have ever wanted to do is to make a difference in the lives of our youth so they can make an even bigger difference in their communities here and far. The support of my candidacy confirms a certain amount of success towards this mission during my 13-year tenure here in the Mercer Island School District. November's election, tonight's change in board seats, and concerns expressed about my appointment all affirm the need for a process, whatever that looks like. That process will expand the search for your next superintendent. This community, unlike others across our country, across our state, is on an inflection point. A disputed hiring process will be an all-too-easy target for those looking to attack, find fault, and question further distracting you as board members, principals, teachers, bus drivers, psychologists, nurses, occupational therapists, paraprofessionals, PTA volunteers, the Mercer Island Schools Foundation, custodians, nutrition services, central office staff, and most importantly, our students from what is mission critical. As a potential internal candidate today and moving forward, you and the community will have more time to hear from those who have worked with me and further evaluate whether I'm the right fit for our school district. I understand that online community forums and public comment tonight will kickstart this portion of the process. You'll also have an equally important opportunity to hear from others who may be wishing to sit in this chair as well. I think we can all unite around the idea that we want the very best for our school district, for its staff, for the parents, and most importantly, our students. Mercer Island School District's next superintendent will need, and frankly deserve, a full endorsement from the five of you as a board to guide the Mercer Island School District forward in these challenging but hopeful days ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Rundell. Our next public inputter is Katrina Sherman on Zoom, I believe.
Hello. This will be the first time I've ever done this on Zoom, so I'm hoping you can all hear me.
We can.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts with you today. As a teacher, I feel I have a different experience with district administration than families. I've taught for 20 years in the Mercer Island School District and have seen a lot of initiatives come and go. I am really encouraged with the district's mission and vision as well as the move toward inclusive schools, equity for all students, and universal design for learning. Fred is in full support of this move and this work. I am not sure we will be able to say the same of another candidate from outside our district. And even if another candidate is in support, he or she will need time to fully understand where we are in the process and what has worked and not worked. This is incredibly tough and important work, and I don't like the idea of it becoming even more difficult to implement. I would love to see a continued focus on how to make inclusivity, equity, and UDL a reality in all our classrooms. I want someone at the helm willing to make sure our staff have the training, schools have the staffing, and the materials to make this actually happen in the best way possible. I want our district to be good, not just sound good, around inclusion, equity, and UDL. Anyone can say they support the work, but not everyone can put it into action. Fred has been a leader in this move. Listening to the inclusion study results had to be tough. Putting steps in place to turn it around was even harder. Have there been hurdles and hiccups along the way? Yes. Is everyone happy with the changes? No. Can we make decisions for everyone to be happy? Probably not. And but is this important work finished? No. Instead of spending $20,000 to $100,000 hiring a company to find a candidate, what about looking for a deputy superintendent that would be a good fit to Fred's leadership style? Someone that believes in inclusivity, equity, and UDL. Someone that realizes it's not enough to believe in them to make it work, but someone that can support school staff as they put it into action. Again, thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts, and also thank you for all of your hard work.
Our next person up is Pat Turner.
Sorry, I did that horrible unmute. Can you hear me now?
I can. We can.
My name is Pat Turner. For 19 years, I worked for the district and retired as the Director of Special Education in 2013. During that time, the district had eight superintendents, some of whom were hired following national searches. One was hired for a year as an interim because no good candidate, despite an extensive search, was found in time. Those superintendents looked impressive on paper, had terrific references, and did well in interviews. But unfortunately, many were not a good match for Mercer Island. It was really eye-opening to see what some of those superintendents were like when they started to work here. I can tell you about the one who had her secretary walk her dog every day. I was on the interview teams for some of the superintendents and was discouraged with how long the process took. Sometimes we found some great candidates only to discover that they had already been hired by another district during the time we were still in the process of narrowing down the field. I was also on the interview team that hired Fred Rundell, and he stood head and shoulders above the rest. There was absolutely no question that he was perfect for the job. Fortunately, he accepted the position, and I had the privilege of working with him for five years. Personally, I think Fred would be the perfect superintendent for Mercer Island. He's a proven leader in the district, is committed to facilitating respectful partnerships, and working collaboratively with parents, teachers, administrative, the board, other staff, and the community to provide the quality and rigor expected of the Mercer Island District. I realize you will probably want to conduct a search, but I encourage you not to spend too much time or money on the process, partly because the best candidates will be hired very quickly by other districts, and especially because you have such an outstanding internal candidate in Fred Rundell. Thank you.
Pat, thank you. Our next speaker is Lee Perks. In person.
Good evening, Board of Directors. Could you make sure you use the microphone? We want those two running to hear you.
Don't start the call.
Okay.
We should run one. Okay.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Directors. Thank you for opening this up to the public. We are really honored to be here. I have three points, and they're quick. One, you have an exceptional leader in Fred Rundell. You guys have to know that. And if you don't know that, go talk to your community. I know there's a lot of voices out there that are saying things, but he's collaborative and has impeccable integrity. Here he is directing you to do a full search. That's who he is. He's a coalition builder. He is a collaborative person. Secondly, we're in unprecedented times. I don't need to tell you this. Our kids are facing a mental health crisis. Our teachers are burnt out, and hopefully, our Board of Directors is quite burnt out, too. So my final point, and the parents' stress to the max, and that's why we're hearing crazy stuff. Point number three, opportunity costs. Your time and your money and the district's time and money. You've got an exceptional leader, proven leader, 13 years. When my daughter started kindergarten, Fred started in the district. I've seen him handle bullying, handle, you know, everything. And he does it gracefully and committedly and with a firm passion for our children and their success. So I have also submitted a letter from Kelly John Lewis. He is our security liaison. You hopefully read that letter and read it, but I'll just meet a couple of points. For the past 23 years, I have been one of the few Black employees of Mercer Island's district. I have never had the privilege of having conversation or getting to know our superintendent. Many would not know my name. Last year after Henderson and Carlyle left the district, I wrote a letter to the staff talking about systemic racism, racism, and myself, the experience I've been employed into this district. I was shocked when Fred reached out to me to discuss my experiences. Fred was the first person in the district with privilege and power to have ever reached out to me. This was such a significant experience because I never felt essential or significant. To be brutally honest, the district may state their vision is to create an empathetic and inclusive environment. However, as a person of color, I have never experienced this. Black employees have come and gone because they didn't want to see change. Fred is the first individual that has made a genuine effort to understand the challenges of the Black employees in this district. I am skipping along. I know I have a lot to offer, but I might not, and I might not fit the Mercer Island mold, yet Fred makes me feel valued. He is not just talking about what needs to be done. He's walking the walk. I respect him and believe he is the right person to lead this district. I bring this information from my dear friend Kelly. And some of you might not know this, but he has shared that he wants to make a difference. And this is such a good example of who Fred is. Kelly came and said, this is what I want to do. Fred said, you know, to be successful in an education environment, you need good education. So Kelly has, you know, he is going back to college to finish his degree. He, he wouldn't have done that if Fred hadn't told him that's what needs to happen to be successful. He, Fred is the type of person who has been a champion of education for his staff, for his employees. He is, he is unbelievable. So I sure hope that you guys take care of yourselves because your time and money are valuable and hire Fred and get on with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Our next speaker is Tammy Sheen.
Good evening, Board of Directors, and welcome, warm welcome to Dan and welcome back to Deborah. As a parent who has children who have grown up through the Mercer Island School District and is someone who has been lucky enough to work with Dr. Rundell as the Development Manager and Executive Director of the Mercer Island Schools Foundation, I have known Dr. Rundell for over, well, about 13 years since he arrived as the new principal at Lakewood where my children attended elementary school. We were thrilled to have him, his energy, approachability, thoughtfulness, and wonderful communication skills. Most importantly, the students loved him. He would greet the students each day outside as they were arriving on buses or being dropped off by parents. It didn't take much for him to know each student by name. He took this one step further by ensuring he knew each parent by name as well. Personally, I interacted with Dr. Rundell many times during elementary school as a volunteer and parent, and always found him to be available, responsive, and a problem solver. He was well-loved at Lakewood by parents and students alike. During his time as principal, it was very clear that the students were his priority. Working with Dr. Rundell now, we sit in many meetings together, Schools Foundation, superintendents at Teaching and Learning Advisory Committee, collaborative grant meetings, PTA council meetings, among others. There is no doubt in my mind that Fred is committed to our students and has the belief that every student should be provided the best education possible. He cares about our students. Everything he does is in the best interest of our students. With the year 2020 and the repercussions following, the stability of our district is of utmost importance. From a fundraising standpoint, our community was incredibly generous last year in the time of remote learning. During my conversations with Dr. Rundell regarding the district priority funding last year, it was decided that we take a conservative approach in our funding goals. Our fall goal last year during remote learning was 321,500. We ended up raising more than $540,000. This is a testament that our community is going to continue to support our students, teachers, schools, and have faith in our administrators even during this time of remote learning. I understand the thought behind opening a search, but in this time of a budget shortfall, coming off more than a full year of remote learning and now in recovery mode, it is hard to understand why when we have an internal candidate who was vetted and offered the position in the last round of a superintendent search, we are now feeling like it's critical to open an expensive and time-consuming search. We have an exceptional candidate who knows our students, community, teachers, and staff, and is incredibly respected. Regardless, I have a confidence Dr. Rundell will rise to the top if there is an open search. As we move away from the chaotic two years that the district has faced, what we will need now is stability, and Dr. Rundell would show us that. Thank you for your time. I also have a letter from Ashley Sternberg. I believe she's the one that tried to read that as well. Is it, or is she on the agenda for different things? She's not. We could certainly submit that letter.
Okay, so she did not.
She didn't sign. Sorry. She didn't sign up. So if you can give it to us in writing, I wish you could, you know it. Okay. Okay, next up is Justin Chan, who is on Zoom.
Yes.
Yeah.
He was there. Can we come back to Justin?
Yeah, we'll come back to Justin.
You mean, okay?
Well, there you are. There you are. Okay. Justin, go ahead.
Hi, let me get my prepared statement. Hello, I'm deeply disappointed that the board is even considering dropping the entire superintendent search process tonight and selecting an internal candidate. This is not a criticism of Fred's Rundell's resume. It is only an observation that our next superintendent should be the best candidate of many, not the only candidate. The search process started in August, four months ago, and so far, the only results of that four months of work has been interviewing the internal candidate. The thought works finished two months ago and was essentially ignored. Why hasn't the board gotten creative about getting candidates? For example, right now on Indeed.com and CareerBuilder.com, nobody has any superintendent postings offering the $250,000 salary that ours would in a major metro area, so we would be competitive. Ads on those sites run a couple hundred dollars. LinkedIn premium costs $800 a month, and will let you search all professionals currently in its database with a superintendent or assistant superintendent role who are looking for work. Our community is exceptionally tech-savvy and passionate and could easily provide volunteer hours to help such process along. And even if we don't go with a more expensive search firm option, I don't understand the hesitation. In the November 18th meeting, you said you didn't want to quote, "look a teacher in the eye and tell them their job is at risk because we spent this money." But the district happily spent $3,500 an hour on inclusive and diversity consultants, which resulted in a bill of tens of thousands of dollars. Surely, we can agree that hiring the top position in our school district is way more important than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. The next speaker is Kathy Morrison, also on Zoom.
Kathy, if you could hear us, can you unmute and turn your video on? Kathy, are you there?
We can come back to Kathy.
Marla?
We'll circle around after first.
Okay.
Okay. Next up is Maria Alberto.
Hi, I think I've done this right. Can you hear me and or see me? I don't think I've participated here before.
So we can hear you and view you.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. So I'm going to change my remarks a little bit. That, I prepared something, and I actually think that this is going to become repetitive if everyone comes to sing the praises of Fred. I have had the pleasure of working with him in a volunteer capacity all the way from Lakewood, our SAC committee, which I chaired with him at the very beginning of his career here at Mercer Island, all the way through the different PTAs I've been involved with. So I, I view Fred as a beloved employee of the district. And I suspect that most of us who came tonight are here to show our support for, for him. What I, I guess I, moving more towards Justin, responding to Justin's comments, I think I'd like to give input on whether the board feels comfortable in moving directly to negotiating with Fred versus doing a search. And I wanted to sort of point out, there's no obligation to do an external search. Companies do internal hires all the time, particularly in a situation where there is an extraordinary candidate. Fred has been effectively groomed. We know he can handle our extremely demanding parent population, all sorts of conflicting demands. And I think we would be crazy to turn our, well, to lose him, frankly. So I, of course, if we had time to do a search, and if a search didn't compromise our negotiations with Fred or his ability to join as superintendent, that's fine, but I, I think this board shouldn't be afraid of doing a direct hire, a direct internal hire. I don't think you're neglecting your fiduciary obligations to the community when I believe if you did a referendum of parents in the community, you would have overwhelming support. In fact, today was just a flurry of activity amongst parents who kind of clued into the fact that Fred may not be directly be directly hired. A lot of people thought he was actually the de facto choice because we hadn't heard anything after Donna Koloski's announcement of retirement. So I actually think the community will be really surprised to hear that I think a lot of people thought he was, this was a done deal because he is so qualified and viewed as such a stellar candidate that why would we look elsewhere? It's a waste of resources and funds. And I think if you don't know Fred, maybe none of this makes sense, but if you, if you've had any opportunity to engage with him, every parent on the island would agree that he is our number one choice for our candidate.
Thank you, Maria. Oh, I can just wrap up around anyone that said that we aren't able to get on there at their, in the correct order. So we'll come back to Kathy in some very time. The next person is Denise Thomas.
Okay, she's still on? Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Denise Thomas. I've been a Mercer Island resident for twenty years. I'm a mother to two Mercer Island High School students, and I'm currently a language arts and social studies teacher at Islander Middle School. I asked the members of the Mercer Island School Board to pursue contract negotiations with Dr. Fred Rundle to become our next superintendent. I met Dr. Rundle twelve years ago, not at the district office and not at an official meet and greet. We met at the Lakewood car drop-off circle, otherwise known as the kiss in the line. Fred opened the back door of my SUV and helped unbuckle my then-five-year-old, greeted him, gave him a high five, and sent him on his way. Nowhere in the job description of a building principal does it state, meet children most days in the pouring rain and help them start their day in a positive way. Yes, he did this from day one. Fred puts relationships first, whether that be with his staff, the parent community, or students. He knew kids and parents by name, supported his staff personally and professionally, and was a beloved leader of Lakewood Elementary. Fred has continually set professional goals for himself and has remained on Mercer Island to serve our community. Since moving from Lakewood to the district office, Dr. Rundle has seamlessly led curriculum, instruction, and student services for our district. Mercer Island School District was recently named the best school district in the state of Washington by Niche.com. A distinction our community is extremely proud of and promotes. This honor in twenty twenty-two, or twenty twenty-one, comes after years of Dr. Rundle's leadership and guidance. There are members of our school board who strongly support opening a national search for our next superintendent. While corporate searches for high leadership positions often garner a large pool of applicants, the same cannot always be said for most educational leadership positions. I asked the board to review the district's last national search for superintendent. How many applicants came out of that search? How many were people of color? How much was the cost of said search? While statistics vary from group to group, the current superintendents in the United States are approximately sixty-five percent male and sixty-eight percent white. I understand the current landscape and the ambition to bring diverse voices to the table where decisions are being made. However, I feel it is just as imperative to hire a leader who holds the same values and missions of our school district and board. I end tonight with an anecdote about Fred and Velcro. When my seventeen-year-old son William was diagnosed with ADHD at the age of seven, Fred asked if he could meet with him personally. He shared with Will about his own challenges with attention, explained how he placed Velcro strips under his table to help him maintain focus during meetings, encouraged Will to embrace his own learning style, and ensured him that he would find success. If this school board stands true to its stated value of supporting the whole child, its directive is to hire a superintendent who embodies that value. No national search is needed. In the last twelve years, Dr. Rundle has proved time and time again that he is that leader. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is President Amy Oda.
I'm not looking at my text messages, I'm looking at my spreadsheet. I support Fred Rundle as our next superintendent. I'm the mom of two children in the district, a high school daughter who's taking A B honors and honors classes, and a special needs young adult who's in the adult transition program. Dr. Rundle is a tremendous asset to our district. I first knew Dr. Rundle when he was Principal of Lakewood. Dr. Rundle has what I call the untapable gene, a personal characteristic to be calm and steady. Dr. Rundle treats parents and children fairly and listens carefully, always with kindness and good humor. As a principal, Dr. Rundle listened to the concerns of my child. I believe Dr. Rundle has the keen sense of childhood and understands the ranges of educational and socio-emotional needs of children with diverse strengths and challenges. With this move into administration, all schools, staff, and children have benefited from the gifts Dr. Rundle brings to his work. We're in a time where there are many employment opportunities and few candidates across our society. While it can be appealing to imagine an ideal candidate whom one has not yet met, I know from working in personnel early in my career and doing searches for professors in my current career that the best predictor of future behavior is past behavior. With a strong inside candidate, we know what we're getting. In this case, that's a person who intimately knows the challenges facing the district and its students, who has established strong relationships with families and staff, and who is poised to hit the ground running as superintendent. With limited outside candidates available, I doubt we could get anyone equal to or better than Dr. Rundle, even with the expenditure, which is substantial, of an outside search and everyone's investment of their best in terms of time and effort. A search would also put Dr. Rundle out on the open market, where he might find an attractive offer, doubling the loss to our district. And then we would be left with an outsider who is the best we could do, but likely not as good as what we give up. We could even end up without an attractive candidate, having to make do with our second or third choice. All of this is unnecessary since we have a first-choice candidate right here in our school district family already. I urge our board members, our board directors, to support an opportunity for Dr. Rundle, I'm sorry, to be superintendent of our school. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Liz Gorzky, you have two.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak at the meeting tonight. My name is Liz Gorzky, and I am the parent of a Mercer Island High School junior and a sixth grader. I participated in the November eighteenth meeting and wanted to let you, as the Mercer Island School District Board members know, I was deeply disappointed to watch the way in which the discussion on this important topic was conducted at that meeting. This is not a popularity contest. This is not about winning at all costs. You, as the Mercer Island School Board members, are in your roles to make important decisions that are in the best interests of all Mercer Island School District children. Not just those with special needs, not just those who are highly capable, but also those who form the massive middle, those who have been ignored, glossed over, and left behind. The raised voices, tantrums, and indecisions I witnessed in the November eighteenth meeting did not inspire confidence. It affirmed my family's decision to move our sixth grader to private school after the disastrous fifth-grade experience over the pandemic at Lakewood. Please know, my husband and I are watching as to how this process unfolds. If what transpired last week continues, she will not be returning to the district. I do ask as well that you vote as soon as possible to begin negotiations with Fred Rundle. Please do not be swayed by the vocal minority who spend all their time on social media platforms, sowing dissent, spewing hatred towards neighbors, dismissing points of view different from their own, and threatening those who dare to stand up to have their voices heard on what we believe is right for our children. Do not waste your time on a national search for the next superintendent. As you know, searches are expensive and time-consuming. With the district already facing a one-point-six-million-dollar shortfall, all available resources should be focused on supporting those massive middle-school students who need to have more learning brought their way and not have the budget transferred to the coffers of an executive search firm. As others have pointed out, just because you undertake an extensive search doesn't mean you'll find the right person for our district in the timeframe required or one you'll be able to reach agreement with. By looking externally, your feedback to all current school employees will be loud and clear. You are not worthy. We don't care how much you know our district, the kids, or the parents, or how much you do. We look outside for important roles. And finally, bringing someone in from the outside means an extended ramp-up time as they learn the district and the community, and by then, another year will have passed. We have a wonderful homegrown candidate in Fred Rundle. He was hired through an external search and has a proven track record. He's a great communicator and approachable by parents and children alike. Please begin the contract negotiations. If you feel the need to appease the social media minority, then focus on finding a suitable deputy for Fred that will ensure continuity for the district for years to come. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dave Meyerson, be on Zoom.
My heard.
Yeah.
Board directors, four years ago, I served my final day on the Mercer Island School Board. The first meeting I have attended since was last Thursday when I observed a truly dysfunctional school board, Mount Everest of board dysfunction. Although Superintendent Koloski informed you many months ago of her resignation at the end of the school year, you seemingly made no progress in the months of discussion towards hiring a new superintendent. No search firm has been hired, no decision has been made regarding our internal candidate Deputy Superintendent Fred Rundle. Now, it seems you are aware of the problem and want to make an irrevocable choice with our new director, necessarily uninformed. And for the record, I'm not a member of any social media. Unfortunately, we are in a similar position as we were five years ago when former Superintendent Plano announced his resignation on January seventeenth. At that time, the board proceeded, under the leadership of Director D'Souza, to quickly choose a search firm, and we ultimately hired our president superintendent. Along the way, as Director Laurie pointed out, we determined that Dr. Rundle did not want the job. I can confirm that I wanted personally to verify his decision, so we had a necessary conversation. You just endured a contentious board election, which included issues of pandemic response, the resulting budget deficit, and the modification of the highly capable program to use a test entirely uncorrelated with ability. I have meant to know a lot about contentious elections and offer the following unsolicited advice. The election is now over. It is now time to govern. Each sitting director received the most votes and now represents all the residents of the island, regardless of who voted for whom. To the board and the administration, be welcoming and accepting of each other and every member of the board. I know it may be hard, but everybody has the same student-oriented goals, so it should be not, it should not be impossible. There is a motion on the floor either to choose Dr. Rundle or pursue a search firm. Dr. Rundle is well-known to me, and I have the highest regard for him. He is an extraordinary administrator with an extraordinary heart. However, the embrace of the disastrous modification of the highly capable program gives me pause. While I consider him for superintendent, I would want to know the particulars of the directions he intends to take and how he would approach the board and how he would approach transparency. If the board is now divided on the fork to take, I urge that the motion before you be tabled until the December ninth meeting. In the interim, additional information may be developed by each of you, hopefully enabling the board to come to a unified decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyerson. Our next speaker is Maya Richardson, in person.
I'm the parent of a junior at Mercer High School and a college student. They were at Lakewood in the occupational spectrum program while Dr. Rundle was principal. And then one of my kids was also in the highly capable program there. I served three years on the school advisory council. Dr. Rundle, Fred is an amazing communicator and listener, and he connects with stakeholders. He's an excellent problem solver. He has new ideas, which he implements all very thoughtfully. I learned so much from him and my kids. He made such a difference in their lives, sort of. Problem solving and helping them grow and be better. And his inspiring leadership of what is possible in public schools. When I became an occupational therapist, I decided to work in public schools because in spite of getting on well, I knew what a difference you could make in society. And he would be the best candidate for this superintendent. To negotiate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is on Zoom, I believe, Petra Barney.
Hi there, oh, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Hi there, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you on behalf of my support for Dr. Fred Rundle. I just wanted to express my family's unwavering support for Dr. Fred Rundle. We have known him since he was a principal at Lakewood, as all three of my children went there, and he has continued to take an interest in our lives. He undeniably cares about each and every student, their growth, their academic success, and their social and emotional needs. I personally see them go out of his way to welcome kids to our community, make sure they integrate successfully with the existing kids, advocate for kids at all levels, and work hard to find positive solutions to problems. He wants academic success for our kids so that they can compete in this world. That is without a doubt. He genuinely cares what is best for each child. I know him to be smart, open-minded, fair, empathetic, trustworthy, a leader, and really respected in our community. I've seen it time and time over. He has trained for years at various positions in our island, and he has the trust of our community. I am personally confident that he would have a really positive impact on our community, students, and school district at a time when we all know it's really critical for many reasons. So in my opinion, I think it's a waste of time and money to pass them up and spend time looking for a better candidate. I absolutely believe that Dr. Rundle is the best candidate for the job, not just because he's here, but because he really is the best candidate for our island, and this district would be lucky to have him. Thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me to support him, and thank you for doing this due diligence, but I hope you'll support Dr. Rundle.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Karina Ofram, and just for those who are watching slash listening, this is the fifteenth out of twenty-one speakers, so forget, forget that. And Karina is on Zoom.
Karina, if you're there, you should be receiving a request to be promoted to a panelist.
Karina, if you're not seeing a message requesting to promote you to a panelist, we will cycle down around to you at the end with the other person that couldn't get on earlier and give you another shot at it. You're not seeing it, hundreds?
I haven't seen her be promoted yet.
Okay, then let's keep going. Let's go to Hillary.
I'm trying to promote Hillary now.
I'm trying to promote Hillary now. Hillary is on. Hillary, can you unmute?
Ryan, there we go.
You're very welcome.
Yep, thank you, guys. Thank you for having me. I'm really happy to be able to speak to you all tonight. Like some of the others who've spoken already, I have three kids in the district. Two of them have graduated from the high school. Another is currently a sophomore. And I've known Fred for many years. In fact, like Pat, I was part of the group that was lucky enough to help decide to hire Fred in the first place. I remember taking Fred around to the different locations, watched as he interacted with parents, with teachers, with staff, and most of all with kids. And I remember going back and writing on the form that Gary Plano gave us. You know, what concerns do you have about the candidate? He asked, and I wrote, my concern is that you're not going to hire him fast enough and that we'll lose him. And it's kind of funny. Now thirteen years later, I feel like it's deja vu because I'm basically saying the same thing. I've had the opportunity to work with him as a CMAPs member, as a volunteer, and as a parent, as my kids have tracked through and made different decisions on, on classes they've taken and programs. I think that the, the thing that's striking me in this conversation is that for those either online or in person who suggests that you can go out on LinkedIn and on Indeed and put out a cast, cast a wide net for candidates, I think does a disservice to the kind of leader that Fred is to Dr. Rundle, sorry, Dr. Rundle. I think we're also comfortable with him. I mean, I think that right there is an indication of what he means to this district. I think that he also brings something to this job as superintendent that nobody else can bring, and that's a longitudinal look at how kids have done. So he can look at, you know, how my kid was in third grade or my other one who was in fifth grade when he started at Lakewood. They've all tracked through middle school and high school and college in some cases now and graduated. And he brings that real informed background to the decisions that he's going to be making and to be leading the district through. And I don't think you can take that for granted, and I don't think that we as a district or as a community should be cavalier about it. It's, there are qualities that can't be replicated, but I also think that experience cannot be replicated. And so, like others have said before, may I urge you not to waste the money and not to squander what's an incredible resource in Dr. Rundle and just, and hire him. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Westover, also via Zoom.
Thank you. I want to thank the board for the opportunity to provide input. As you saw through the nearly fifteen hundred responses on Thought Exchange, there has been significant interest in the community and a desire for more listening and transparency in the district's decisions. This district should be an attractive one to many candidates, giving us an opportunity to increase the diversity of our district, both in background and in ideas. For example, in our high school principal search, we found a strong candidate from another state. With the recent polarization of school boards nationally, our district will be an attractive destination. There's been a lot of discussion of the cost of the search. To me, this ignores the financial elephant in the room, which is the upcoming levy renewal. Fortunately, our district has a strong history of supporting levies, and I hope that'll continue. But this also feels like a particularly vulnerable time, given the number of families outside the district, and bypassing a search would risk a narrative that the board is ignoring the community, which could be disastrous to the future of the district. I would urge the board to conduct a broad national search so that we can know we found the best candidate for our district, whether that's an internal candidate or someone externally. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Beth Kristofferson, also via Zoom.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me time to speak tonight to the board. I would like to share my support for Fred Rundle as the new Mercer Island super, the Mercer Island School District Superintendent. It's obvious based on comments from tonight that he is a well-supported candidate. As a former Mercer Island School District elementary teacher and current K through five substitute, I've known Dr. Rundle professionally for several years and value his leadership, professionalism, and awareness of ensuring all stakeholders, students, teachers, parents, administrators, community members, are valued, respected, and encouraged to collaborate to support student-centered learning. As a resident of Mercer Island and a parent with two children enrolled in the school district, I value the perspective and history that Fred brings to the table. We need Fred's knowledge and leadership to guide the district in cultivating an environment that supports all learners in all avenues while stepping away from divisive rhetoric. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you guys will make the decision to have Dr. Fred Rundle as our next superintendent.
Thank you, Ben. Our next speaker is Fatima Berkey, Fatima, sorry, Fatima Berkey, in person.
She had some leave.
I'm so sorry. She had the leave. Okay. Our next, next speaker is Sherry Luthall, in person.
She also had a leave.
Kim Tuna.
Hey, good evening, board of directors. My name's Kim Tuna, mother of three in the school district, actually one's now out. And I'm here to, like many, but a little different to show my support for Fred. I guess. Um, he is obviously, as you personally know, a master of balancing student, teacher, and parents, like nobody's business. But he probably has no idea the impact he had on my family. And when I had a kindergartner and a fourth grader diagnosed with dyslexia, things were really difficult. And he creatively found ways to help me get through that, as well as took my oldest, the fourth grader at the time, and helped encourage her to accelerate in math and take some more public programs, which later resulted in a deep calculus, had calculus here, as well as now she's a soft part of scripts and doing well. However, that's my first point. The second point is, I wanted to talk a little bit about last Thursday. And that was pretty embarrassing to watch. And I hope everybody's reflected a bunch on it, and we promise to do better because Mercer Island needs you to do better than what happened. That was not respectful, and that was not the best interest. And I would actually like to say, or would like to say that it is important now to do the search. There's been lots of good reasons that were brought up today, but he needs to assume, I want, for example, being my new superintendent. But he needs to assume that position without, like, we've had any quarters or doing this just because we don't have the money. Those are not good reasons. And so we need this. This is an important position, and it's for you to search. The last thing I wanted to bring up was I'm also asking you again, as the school board, to do better. There are a bunch of issues out there, and the community is incredibly heated. We need you to be much more transparent. We need you to do your job and be good leaders. And we need you to take these different positions. But I'll just give you a couple around right now that people are talking about. It is, again, possibly going to hurt the levy, possibly just forgetting the levy, just how people feel about our community and what we're doing with the school district. You need to be very clear about how you feel about open enrollment, the high cap, the AP classes, your budgets, diversity, CRT, all of these types of things. I don't know if you've been on your website, but your website is super unclear. And I'm here asking today, so one, to support Fred, two, to make sure that you are doing a search, and three, to ask you at this super critical time when people are incredibly polarized, help people understand what your vision is and what you're doing, and do that.
Thank you, Ken. I'm sorry I mispronounced your name. Okay. I'm looking through. Um, I'd like to circle back around to Kathy Morrison and Karina O'Bronge, if they are available.
I have a text from Karina. She wasn't able to speak, but she sent me what she was going to spend. Can I speak on her back? I can show you my, I can show you where that's at.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
Thank you for doing that. Yes, hi, I'm Denise Thomas, but I am speaking on Karina O'Bronge's behalf, who is going to come and speak on her son Governor's behalf. Governor is a current senior at Mercer Island High School, and he just really wanted to say something about Mr. Rundle. So I'll just read what he wrote. "I had Mr. Rundle when I first arrived to Mercer Island as my principal in kindergarten at Lakewood Elementary. He was always very supportive of the students and was more of a friend than a principal. He was always constantly checking in on me and my friends, making sure we were happy with our experience at school. I think he is a perfect representative representative of our school values of inclusivity, innovation, integrity, and inspiration. He cares about each individual's health and safety within our school district. I will never forget his conscientious effort to make our learning fun and interesting. With this in mind, I think he would be the perfect person to really understand student opinion and make our voices heard."
That's great. Thank you. And finally, Kathy Morrison. If you are still on. Try again.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you and see you.
Oh, good. Oh, you can see me too. All right. I'd like to thank the board for allowing this time to have the public come and give input regarding the superintendent's search. It's one of the most important jobs in our entire community. While I do believe it's generally favorable to do a full search for a superintendent, our past history on Mercer Island has proven that the results are not always positive or effective. In my twenty-five years with Mercer Island School District as a music teacher at Lakewood, associate principal at all three elementary schools, Island Park Principal, Associate Superintendent, and Director of Learning Support, I have also worked under eight superintendents, just like Pat Turner. Many of them impressed the community and school boards at the time of their hire, but turned out to be less than perfect fits for the Mercer Island community, and some even did more to divide the community and the school, school employees than to get anything really done. I was on that interview team that recommended Fred Rundle be hired as the Lakewood principal. I'm really proud to say that. Out of the twenty-plus candidates, it was clear that Dr. Rundle was miles ahead of all the other candidates. In fact, I went up at the end of the, the interview session and told Dr. Plano that he needed to get on it right away and get those references checked. And what could we do to move it along? Because we did not want to lose Fred. He was a gem. Since then, he's proven to be an outstanding principal, a director of learning support, and since being appointed Associate Superintendent and Deputy Superintendent, he's continued to prove himself to be up to the challenges of the top leadership role in Mercer Island School District. He always puts students at the center of every decision, and he walks that fine line between parents, students, teachers, administrators, and is respected by the far majority. It's not surprising that someone who's worked in our district for so many years would have some people who would have issues with his leadership decisions. However, I know that he's highly respected by most parents, staff, and students. He's kind, knowledgeable, professional, and wise beyond his years. I've always been concerned that Fred might take a superintendent position in another district. If that were to happen, it would be Mercer Island School District's loss. It's very important that the district move forward immediately with the board's initiatives. Fred Rundle is knowledgeable about our district and can make that happen on day one. He already has the established relationships with the majority of the Mercer Island School District and community. A new superintendent would spend the first year getting to know the community and developing relationships, doing surveys, what do you like, what do you not like, what do you want to change, ideas. It's well known that it takes three years for a superintendent to make any meaningful change, and we don't have that amount of time to wait. We have an outstanding candidate. Let's not let him get snatched up by another district. If there is to be a search, please make it a quick one and choose Fred Rundle. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy. That concludes the public input for tonight. I would like to call a five-minute break for everyone here who's been so patient. So we will, at six ten PM, we will come back in five minutes at six fifteen. Mercer Island, D O R G. Thank you very much for all your stories and input. Before we get started on the next portion of this meeting, I wanted to say that normally, though, the previous board director is present in person, so normally I would have said this directly to former board director Janie Upton, but I did want to thank him for his service and for his, the vast amount of effort that he has put in over the years in representing Mercer Island, both internally within the board, but also to the Washington State School Directors Association and in the legislature. He has been, for me as a new board director, a wealth of kind of institutional knowledge, and I appreciate pretty much the work that he's done, and I would like to thank him for his service. I don't know if anyone else wanted to try and know that.
I'd like to thank Brian very much. I remember meeting him in CMAP's campaign a long time ago. So he's been a dedicated servant to Mercer Island and our school community. He's been instrumental on the board, always keeping us on top of legislation and everything happening. And we will miss his legislative reports at the end of each board meeting. So congratulations to Brian on his anniversary this evening, and we wish him the best. And I hope he'll be able to show up next week, and we can, oh, in two weeks. Yeah. And we can say in person, oh, thanks.
I'm just gonna wait, and I mean, I'm talking to him in private, and I will wait to see if we see him on the night.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is information and report. So at our last meeting on November 18th, the board voted to establish a committee of two, consisting of myself and Director De Souza, to gather information on the availability and approximate cost of hiring a search firm or consultant to conduct a superintendent search. So I'm going to just give a very brief summary because it's germane to the discussion that we'll be having in the next item. So I reached out to, hang on, I错了. I reached out to one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight search firms on Friday and today, and was able to speak with someone at five of those firms. And the good news is that not only is there a lot of availability, all of these, all the firms that I actually spoke to will be happy to bid on our RFP, if we put out an RFP, but also the prices being quoted to me, or estimated prices, were much lower than what we were expecting. So we had been told that we could expect to spend $150,000 or upward for a national type of search. And I think that that estimate that we got from WAZA was based on pre-COVID practices, which involved a lot of flying around. So like teams of people flying into town and having to be put up in hotels, and then flying out, then flying back in, also having to fly candidates, you know, for even just preliminary interviews, that type of thing. Because the price range we're being quoted now is more on the nature of $12,000 to $30,000 for the search. And so that does not include all expenses. So, you know, expenses can go up from there, but, but most of the firms said that they do almost everything via Zoom now. They might do like a preliminary visit to get to know the district a little bit, and then, you know, they would fly in applicants for final, for final interviews. So that was good news, less money than we expected. The other thing was that the search firms are actually all pretty different in terms of their specialization, whether it's Washington State applicants, you know, Washington State districts versus a more, more of a national perspective and national pool of candidates. And so I didn't expect there would be that much kind of difference between the ones. So. Yeah. Okay, so that's pretty much what we found. And I also researched our RFPs, requests for proposals, and I wrote one up in case we need one. So that's attached to the two board docs for this meeting, if people want to take a look at what I wrote up. But we'll, we'll get to that in another talk or two. So that's it, that's my report. Any questions? Yes?
Do we have an answer if it is required by, that we are required to submit an RFP, or can we do a direct hire of a search firm?
So we're not technically required to do an RFP because it'd be amount, the dollar amount we're talking about is, is pretty low compared to, I don't know what the cutoff is, but we're well, we'd be well below it. So there is no requirement. And in fact, during the 2017 search, there was not an RFP. They just interviewed some, looked at firms and picked some to interview. Is my understanding correct, David?
You know, good question. I thought we did an RFP because we had three search firms come to us, but Donna says no, and she knows better.
There's no record of one.
There's no record of an RFP. There is a record of the board having conversations with, I believe it was, three firms before choosing one.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's not required. So that's something that.
I'm not questioning the process. I just want to make sure that we are.
Yeah.
All right. Why are you?
Okay. Okay, so if there are no questions, then that concludes my report, and we can move on to the next item, which is this discussion and action item of whether to enter contract negotiations with Dr. Rundle, or to issue an RFP, or otherwise hire a search firm or consultant to conduct this superintendent's search. So we could get a motion, I guess, so we can open discussion, yeah?
You do have this listed as a discussion or action, so it allows you to take action if the board does receive a motion. But you certainly could have discussion before someone then makes the motion.
Okay, then let's have discussion. Somebody want to kick that?
So I guess I will, I will start. I think since, I appreciate the discussion we had last time, and I think it's pretty clear where the last board was, was trying to get to. And there's, there's a great deal of respect for Dr. Rundle. I know every one of us, I'm one of the Lake Ridge parents who was there when Fred started as principal. So there's huge passion and love. He's, he's family at this point, once raised, raised his kids for us, he's family. So, but I respect also that we are a new board, and I think it would be worthwhile for this new board to have an executive discussion and interview with Dr. Rundle to make progress around that before making, you know, a decision around the contract. So that would be my, my suggestion.
So you're saying because we have a new board member who hasn't been part of our previous discussions, you think we should, as a board, have a closed executive session where we all interview Dr. Rundle slash re-interview for some of us?
Yes, that's right. And, and I think all the email messages that have come in today clearly haven't been shared with the new board member. That would be worthwhile to see as well. I mean, clearly, the passion at the podium came through, but I think the email messages as well should be shared with the new board member. And I don't know how that, I don't think I got access to previous emails when I started. Is there a way we could share?
No, I'm, he and I have already chatted. I'm going to be forwarding him today's email messages, but his email wasn't turned on until four o'clock today, so he won't have a chance to look at it for him.
Yeah, so I think there's a lot of information here to, to come up to speed.
Cam and Dan, I'm watching you to see if any little hands go up, any little Zoom hand.
I think Dan's hand is up.
Oh, now it's good. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so good, good to be here via Zoom, but I guess that's a sign of the times and has some advantages. I want to begin by just saying that I'm, it's an honor to be part of the board. We have big decisions in front of us. It's a significant responsibility that lays on our shoulders, and I believe that, that we can carry through with that. I think also it's been clear, like in comments today, that during the past 13 years, that Fred has a lot of support, and I, I expected that, and I think that's great. You know, frankly, if he didn't, there's no reason he should be under consideration. And clearly, I think there's a testament to his service, his ability to connect with individuals, and, and that's great and heartening to see. At the same time, I haven't heard in the comments today, and maybe this has been discussed internally, what the vision is for the district going forward. There's a lot of data points and issues that came up in the election, but that was reflective of the community at large when it comes to the enrollment exodus, when it comes to the financial situation and what the plan is to address it, when it comes to how do we provide a education that is tailored to each individual and sets them up to thrive? Like this maybe has been communicated to the board internally. I don't know, I became a member, I guess, one hour and 31 minutes ago, or a little bit less when I was appointed. But I think there's no way that I could fulfill my duties and the heavy responsibility of being a board member to vote on a contract today without understanding what Fred's vision is, and moreover, without that being communicated to the community at large. Because a superintendent selection process isn't just about the individual, but it's providing the opportunity for that individual to communicate out the vision to the community. And I think that needs to take place. So I guess in conclusion, I want to thank Fred. I want to thank all the 20-odd individuals who provided comments today. I think it's heartening to hear that we have such a great leader in Fred, but it would be premature for me to take a position of whether to extend a contract to him without understanding what the vision is for the district going forward.
Cam.
So I'm hearing what Dan is saying and also what you're saying, David. If we, it does make sense if to get Dan up to speed with the new board, if we are meeting with Fred to discuss, to get, you know, to hear potentially, like Dan said, the vision, Fred's vision. But that's kind of based on assumption that when we meet with Fred internally, that if we hear his vision and we're okay with it, we're happy with it, and we move forward, and we only do an open search if we're not okay with Fred. And from the very get-go, I've been very open and direct, and it's not about the individual for me, it's about system process that we are doing. And so I, like I said, I understand, and I am aligned with Fred's vision, but I don't think, you know, I don't think like us meeting again in an executive session to interview Fred is, would change, you know, my, my belief in what is the duty of a board member. And given the time that we have right now, it's just like further delay. So that's where I understand the need to get Dan up to speed, but also I don't know the benefit of, you know, doing executive session to meet with Fred.
So I voted against postponing, well, postponing till today at our last meeting. And I was concerned because I think it's asking a lot of a new board director to be making a decision like this, and not that he's not fully capable, but, but any of us, I'm putting myself in those shoes when I first came onto board, making, making frankly the most important decision as a board director can make. We're not, we're not behind in a search. Most as, as someone said earlier, um, Dr. Plano didn't declare his retirement until January and that's when that board started. And while it was on the later side, that was certainly okay. I was actually just looking at the shoreline superintendent search in their timeline. They started in January and had it wrapped up in April. That is the typical timeline. I want to assure the community and the board's put out statements to this effect, but just, I know people are maybe listening a little bit more now. We've been working on this. You are correct that, that the board has known longer than the public about superintendent clock's retirement and has been having conversations since that was, since that was announced to us. We've been gathering information. We've been meeting with experts. We've been looking at, you know, learning about the, the financial implications that it could have and, and all the different scenarios. We have all talked to board directors around the area who have participated in many superintendent searches and their perspectives in terms of national searches versus internal direct hires, which, which several of them have done, including the last couple of years. So to imply that the board hasn't been doing things, we have been. The only things that are in private are very, very clearly explained by law in our C Ws. And that is when we are looking at the, evaluating the performance of a district employee. So when we met with Fred, as we have, because that's been made public now, that was, that was executive session. We don't talk about budgets. We don't talk about vision of the district. We've had special meetings where we were, those were all open to the public, where we had our special meetings where we were learning these, this information and talking about thought exchange and what ways we wanted to get this information out to the community. Unfortunately, we don't get a ton of attendance. And I understand, and I'm not criticizing, when we get to the big issues, you know, I feel, I, I personally feel the weight of it on my shoulders. I, we have elected officials and a lot of us, you know, voice our opinion at the ballot box and then kind of pass on that responsibility to the other elected officials to do due diligence and to make the best decision possible for the community. I want to assure the, assure the community that, at least in my opinion, we've been doing that. We have a lot of information. We've had a lot of very difficult discussions in private with regards to things that do fall under executive session. And as we got to this impasse, it was time to bring the community up to speed and then involved in the process. My, I've been pretty steadfast from the get go that I thought it was, I, I don't think we can do any better than, than Fred. And, and when I, when I see that, I, I think you to have, to hear from staff, parents, colleagues and students all at the same time that they believe that they've had positive experiences with him, that they believe he makes decisions with students as a priority. And they talk about personal relationships with him. That's very, very unusual for a leader. It is not a difficult job. I'm sorry. It is not an easy job to straddle that line. As I know, some of our former administrators spoke to us today. And those are some of our beloved former administrators. We have not had only beloved former administrators. We've had many that have not been particularly successful. And I really look at the fact that we get, we have stakeholders from frankly, every group who are coming in and saying the same thing. I understand the desire to want to open up the search to a national search. Again, when I, I came on the board, the board, when the, when the former board was, well, had just finished their search, but I was running for, for the seat during the, during the hiring process. And, and you know, frankly, as an outsider at that point, who kind of had, you know, maybe one half step, half foot in, I was frustrated. I was frustrated with the lack of involvement that the community can really have because of the confidentiality of applicants. And at that point, you know, it was a national search and, and that was the only choice at that point that the board could make. We didn't have an internal, or they didn't have an internal candidate at that point. So I get it. And I felt the same way. And after serving on board and learning the things I've learned and having the experiences I've had, I am grateful to the former board for making the decision and, and following the process that they chose. In, I'm grateful and I've expressed this directly to him, to Fred for declining the offer five years ago, four years ago, that, that was offered to him because he didn't think he was ready. He was working on his PhD, his children were younger and he felt like this district deserved more or more than he could give at that moment in time. He had a lot of experience. He was an amazing candidate, but, but he did not think he was ready. I think that's another example of his character to recognize limitations and when someone's ready and not ready. The, you know, we're, we're sort, I, we're not in a similar situation now. We have an amazing internal candidate and I'm very confident that we cannot do better. We could open up the search nationally. I, I don't think we're going to get anywhere near the quality of candidates that we had in our last search. I could be wrong and I'm now open to that and I'm, I'm happy to be proven wrong. But, but I think we're going to be hard pressed to do that. I just can't get past the fiscal irresponsibility of spending money on a search when the people that say to me, we need a national search, but we're going to end up with Fred anyways. It is literally burning money that we don't have. I think people are going to be shocked at superintendent salaries in this area. All of the listings that we see are over $300,000. It's not 250. It's not 240. It's over $300,000. And if we want to be competitive, that's where we're going to have to be. It's not okay to devalue and knowing Fred, he's going to be willing to take less, but, but you know, we need to question whether or not, no, he's not. Okay, then.
You don't know that.
I don't know. I just said knowing Fred. I'm not, I don't know anything. We've never talked about it. I'm just, just in terms of his character. I can't, it's just another, I know, I know a speaker said this tonight, but it's just another example of his character. And I've been thinking about this all day. That he came in, he wants us to do a search because he wants the district to be successful. He wants whoever is in that position to take off and run. And he, I know he's very concerned that, that with, with the animosity in the community, that, that that's going to be a problem. I just can't get back past the fiscal issue. I'm, I know, yes, I'm worried about him leaving and finding another place to be, but I'm much more concerned about the money. We are, as people say, we've got $1.6 million deficit. Hopefully, I know there's great plans to make that up. I think enrollment's going to bounce back. I think there's a lot of spin on what our actual enrollment issues are. And it is, I just can't get past it. That being said, we have a new board director who's never had the opportunity to meet with us, with our internal candidate. And, and I mean, unless he's going to abstain from the vote, I'm not suggesting in any way that he does. He can't make a decision without that opportunity. I don't think we need to sit down again as a board and have that conversation with Fred. He's gone through frankly, two interviews with us. I would suggest that, that Mr. Blowett have the opportunity to sit down with Fred and then any other board director does so individually rather than as a group. Unless there's outstanding questions by other board directors, I think that pushing this discussion to the next regular board meeting on December 9th is going to give our community more opportunity to provide feedback. I know Fred's door is always open for conversations and emails and he is an amazing communicator. And if people are concerned, I encourage them to reach out, knowing that he has a, you know, 80 hour a week job also and a family. But I know he welcomes that. And I just can't, at least at this point, get past spending money on a search when I have not heard any concerns about our candidate. We've, to be benefited of a 13 year job interview to receive that benefit, it's, we are so fortunate. So at this, I, I know that, I, I, I'm pretty sure our students want to participate in the discussion too. But at this point in time, without making a motion yet, I'm leaning towards, towards, what's the right word? Not tabling, but postponing a decision until the next board meeting so that we can have an opportunity for our new board director to get up to speed, meet with our candidate and then we make a decision going forward. I am not happy about that in the sense of the timeline. I really want to get this thing started and I, but I also don't want to waste firms' time or ours frankly, to be interviewing people, not knowing that that's the direction we're going to head in. So that's, that's where I'm.
Thank you. I'm just going to make a comment and then I would like to hear from our student representative. Um, so first of all, as far as like getting more feedback, I did want to mention that we've just gotten into the board and just received an email by Sally Lozier on behalf of the MIEA, um, that, uh, which represents more than 420 members of our staff. Um, and she said, we feel that Fred is an excellent candidate. We support a search process that is quick, relatively inexpensive and considers Fred Rundle as an internal candidate. So just letting people know that we can receive that as input. Um, I, like the, okay, I'm a little concerned about the timeline here. Because I didn't get into this in my report, but we're really tight on time now, particularly because of the holidays, because we're hitting Thanksgiving and then we're hitting Christmas or, you know, winter break. And so if we wait two weeks and then the conclusion at, at that two week mark is hmm, we think we want to hire a search firm. And then we put it, put out an RFP and give everyone two weeks and then it comes back to us, then we have to review all the RFPs. We have to choose some finalists, is the usual process. We have to set up interviews. They need to be given at least half a week to get ready for those interviews because they wouldn't have known up till that point that they were finalists. Then we'll have to have a separate board meeting to discuss those. Like we won't have hired a firm until basically Christmas, if that, maybe January sometime. And then that pushes the whole project out. So I'm interested in either in either going ahead with at least getting the RFP out there so that we would have some, you know, proposals to, to work with at the next meeting or just going ahead and deciding to do a search. So, um, I, there's a certainly a very strong argument that can be made for the hiring of an internal candidate. I, I do understand the concerns and it's actually very sensible and reasonable of Director Blowett to, to not feel like he's ready to make a decision at this point. I personally don't really want to interview Dr. Rundle again, like, not for the, like, not, like, I don't want to repeat the exact same questions and make all the other board directors sit through it. I would actually prefer at this point for him to be interviewed by the board alongside whatever other candidates we, we find who are worth interviewing. So that he, so that we actually, if we're really doing a search, we want to be able to see what other candidates are there, are out there, are they strong candidates? Like, how does he compare against them? You know, if we're going into this, we might as well really do it and, and know what's out there, you know? Um, so from my point of view, like, I'd rather just wait and, and kind of interview him again on that, that point. But it, but for sure, if, if Director Blowett wants to meet one-on-one with Fred or with another board member present and, and kind of get caught up, that's fine. And I'm also happy to sit down with him and go over what I'm able to go over with him about what we've done so far, what the questions were, that kind of thing. Um, to whatever extent I'm able to. Um, I was going to say that like that, 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 yes, there's a strong case to be made for hiring Dr. Rundle. But, but I also hear and see that there, there are strong arguments in favor of doing an open search, both from a standpoint of kind of like equity and opportunity and, you know, it's 2021, like maybe, you know, a, a lot of, a lot of districts in the past wouldn't have thought twice about just immediately, you know, in fact, in fact, school districts in our area haven't really thought twice about elevating their, you know, assistant or deputy superintendent when the, the previous superintendent announced that they were departing in the last few years. But, but we're trying to be very deliberate and thoughtful about our hiring processes here as a district. And so I feel there's a very reasonable argument to be made for that. And then I also think that there is, there is a lower level of trust in the community and some of this comes from, you know, COVID and the, the state of high alert that all of us have been on for most of the last two years, you know? And the fact that we're not still for the most part, meeting publicly with our faces, you know, open to each other in a, in a communal sense. So there's a lot of this like isolation. We're all at home. You're trying to sort of guess at people's motives and figure out what's going on through like reading the tea leaves, you know? And for sure, we have heard loud and clear in the thought exchange and elsewhere, that people want more transparency. They really want to know what's going on. They want to be well informed. And so for me, a search is partly a way of accomplishing that so that people can kind of see like what's, what's, you know, all the, the moving parts, you know? Um, so, and for me, like, I, I realized that we're not required to do an RFP. If we do decide to go with the search option, we're not required to do an RFP, but I would really urge us to do it because again, it's, it's partly like, these firms are quite different. Some of them are quite different. Some of them are more, more similar to each other, but some of these firms are quite different, right? And, and the kind of candidates we're going to get are going to be different. And so I'd like to do that work in public and have the public get to see, you know, the interviews that we do with the firms so that they, they know what's going on and kind of know that we're, we're genuinely looking at, at, you know, the candidate pool that's out there. And perhaps we will be, we will, the conclusion will be, aren't we lucky to have had this wonderful internal candidate here this whole time? But I, I think those of you who are worried about potentially losing Dr. Rundle to, you know, poaching from other districts should be concerned about the timeline like I am. If we, if we take a really long time to decide that we actually need to do a search, it's possible that a search will be done until, you know, the end of April. And that would be disastrous, I think, for our district potentially. I also just think it's not, it's not great for the staff and for parents and for even kids to not know kind of what the plan is and what direction we're going, like, like the sooner we can do that, do it in like an open and clear fashion, the better. So I really don't want to take any steps today that are going to slow down the timeline if we think it's very likely that we're going to have to do a search. I would love to, I see your hand up, Dan, but I would like to hear from our student reps first and then we'll go back around and people have the comments.
The main thing I just would love to touch on, I guess, is just seeing as much student engagement as possible on these next steps. I feel as if almost every next step we have to take will involve students. And I know not always we can involve students. But you know, the students are the priority and they should have a, a big say and be able to talk to the candidates that we have because, you know, the superintendent, next superintendent is going to, you know, they're the head of the district and can decide a lot of things for students. And I know it is the board's decision to have a superintendent, but I do think that students need to be able to share how they feel. And I know as for thought exchange that was shared out with our schools, I really only know that the ASP and our school senate completed it and I'm not sure how many other students did. So I would just like the board to keep that in mind as even for that, not every student is going to be super interested in this. But there are students who are and are deeply passionate about this and I think they would like to have their voices heard over these next couple of months and these next couple of steps.
Yeah, I completely agree with Andrew. I think if there's ever possibility for student input, definitely to take advantage of that. And I also feel like, I know that before I was superintendent, I didn't really know what superintendent did. I didn't really know who it was. It was always kind of like amorphous, uh, that was like administration, like a lot of students, I feel like don't really know who's making the decisions or like what the positions are at the top. And so Andrew and I were kind of talking about this, but maybe just being more transparent to students and maybe like having more places for information where students can figure out like what decisions are being made, who's making them, if they ever just. Um, if they ever just want to provide their voice and that's something Andrew and I kind of want to stay on, it's maybe um finding ways to provide more information. Um, so that students can make informed decisions and um kind of help out, because we don't know like what. You're wanting to speak on, obviously you can't give an informed opinion, so, um, but I agree with Andrew as well, if there's a place for students.
Um, thank you guys very much for that. Um, I will tell you that all of the firms I spoke to definitely had a kind of like student outreach component, so what they, what they do with districts. So, um, they, one of the things that, that we have done, right? Is the thought exchange, because each of them, when I mentioned that we had already done a thought exchange on this, on the topic of what qualities people most wanted to see in their next superintendent. They were like, oh, that's great, because usually we spend a month surveying people and talking to people about that question before writing the job description. But because we did that in October, they have that to base it on, so they, that will help them with just the part of getting the job posting up. And then there'll be a month where, there would be a month where they were waiting for um responses to come in. And during that month, they would be able to start doing outreach with student groups and parent groups and all that kind of thing. I sound like a shill for. For search firms, but I didn't. Um, yes, Dan.
Uh, yeah, so, um, I'm not sure how many people follow football and frankly, I don't follow it that closely. But I am aware that uh, the National Football League has what's called the Rooney Rule. Um, which is for any head coach in the league, that they need to interview uh, a minority candidate. Um, in order to ensure that it's a diverse pool, right, and that everyone has a shot. And I think it's a, you know, point that Tam touched on last meeting is, there's a question of our commitment to equity. Um, and equity can be diminished in many ways. Um, some of those can be valid concerns, cost, losing a qualified individual. But at the end of the day, if a more diverse candidate pool doesn't have a shot. Like, I think that speaks volumes. And I think having an open search and doing it with considering internal candidates as well. The NFL has shown that it doesn't mean that you pick an external candidate. But there's a requirement to go out and hear from everybody. And I think already we've heard tonight that some of the concerns were exaggerated. Uh, a hundred and fifty thousand was the number that was broadcast quite widely before this meeting. And it now appears that it's gonna be much less than that. Maybe circumstances have changed and it's a, a product of doing uh interviews over COVID, but nonetheless, right? Like, that data point was just incorrect. And so I, I would say at the end of the day, like, one, there's, I, I think it's now, like, hopefully everyone recognizes, there's no way I can vote. Uh, with respect to Fred, recognizing the support that he has. But also, I think there's a question about process and commitment to equity and what that means if we live the values. Uh, that we broadcast.
I'm, I'm also hap- I'm actually happy to take responsibility for that a hundred and fifty K uh cost. Because that, that is. Uh, my dad, that is, that's, that, that is very actual. It was actually more than that last time around. And, uh, we did find candidates and we did fly in search firms. And all the search firms came and visited us in front of us and had an in-person meeting. Uh, as well as multiple flights from communities to meet parent, uh, teacher engagement. Um, all done with flights, hotels, um, everything like that. So that, uh, there, there was no nefariousness on those, on those costs at all. Um, second point was when we started the previous search. We uh, we made a decision very, very early on that it had to be unanimous. The superintendent is the most important role for the board. And it's the biggest decision we would make as a board. And we, we had a, it wasn't public, it was an internal, an internal desire that it be unanimous. And it, it, you know, it was frustrating uh in so many ways. Uh, and I just can't begin to enumerate that much, much as these costs add up. So, so with that respect, in that respect, everyone's opinion mattered. Um, there, there was a, there was indeed, nobody was questioning, questioned whether they were genuinely interested in moving this forward. You know, these opinions, when they, when they helped us to something, we didn't, we didn't question it. We, we knew with all sincerity, people wanted to hire a superintendent and wanted to move forward. And we did get it done in time. And we had uh internal unanimity around Fred Rundle. And getting there took a while. Um, but it made getting to unanimity around Donna much, much easier. And then Deborah mentioned uh how surprised she was that we went into deliberations and came back uh with the unanimous decision. Now, that, that was a, a great killer part of it. So I think that's up to this board to decide if we want unanimity as well. I think we do. I think Fred Rundle said he wants uh the support of five board members. So with all sincerity, uh, we should be trying to get to a unanimity. With that, I, I'm, I'm actually good today voting on doing the RFP and let's get that process started. Um, it's, that's what it takes to get unanimity. The other part is interviewing Dr. Rundle, I think. We'd say, I'm, I'd like to do it again as a board, I think there's some value in doing it as a board, so that we see what each other cares about. It helps when I know what other directors care about from the questions they're asked. It, uh, we all have the same information when those uh interviews are occurring. There's nobody with any secret information that gets thrown out or anything like that. It, it builds more trust when these happen together. Uh, since uh the whole board has been sworn in, we could do the uh executive meeting on Tuesday next week. In parallel, let me do the RFPs. Um, we could also get the RFPs done and start looking at that. Um, around the next board meeting, maybe you would on a Friday after the board meeting. I'd hate to put our RFP investigation on the same day as the board meeting, but we could look at it the next day and, and speed this process up.
So because of the Thanksgiving holiday, if we post the, our, and I've just spent a lot more time thinking about this. And looking at the calendar than anyone else so far. Um, if we post an RFP tomorrow and we give people two weeks to get back to us. Then that will be coming in on Wednesday the eighth, these are twenty-page submissions from potentially, you know, ten or twelve firms. Um, which is a lot to ask board members to review the day of a board meeting when there's also other documents to review. Um, so I actually think we would probably do better to have a separate meeting to review the, the RFPs and pick some finalists. I just don't think it's gonna give enough time.
Yeah, sorry, I, I was indicating not on the day of the board.
Yeah, yeah, not on the day.
So till like a tenth or something like that.
Yeah.
Or even on, on the Tuesday following the tenth.
Right.
Uh, in fact, for most of these search firms, um, it's pretty boilerplate for their submissions, but it will take them more.
Yeah, so we could do it on something like the tenth and then, and then interview the following week, like the Tuesday, for example, the fourteenth. And then make a decision on the fifteenth, if that's what we wanna do. So, so are you proposing that we would. Approve the RFP with whatever changes people wanna make and put it out there without having made the decision that we want to do a search, is that correct?
I think we can, I think we can make that decision just now to, to do a search. And the scope is going to be defined by the RFPs we get and the pricing we get.
Yeah.
And what the collective board members think we need after reviewing it.
Sure.
So I'm, I feel very strongly uh, a desire for, for a search, if we believe. And, you know, indirectly we're saying unanimity is important.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree that, that, I'm not gonna say unanimity, but, but alignment is important. I know that, that um Fred is fond of saying that they teach in superintendent school that, that you should never go into a job where you don't have, you know, unanimity. Of approval by the board and, and that's partly because you don't wanna go into sort of a controversial situation where you might already have people opposed to your leadership. But I've been realizing lately, I think it's also because if you go into a situation where you've been hired with, you know, like a three-two vote sort of thing. That's not a board that's in good alignment. And I think that that is something that we need to move towards as a board, is more alignment. Like, you can't, it's like we're all in a bag together and if we're all trying to walk in different direction, we're not gonna get anywhere, right? And so, um, for me, this, this is the choice that would is most likely to get us all like moving the bag one direction, if that makes sense. Tam, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Maggie Tai. And I think we keep going back and forth and, um, you know, some of us are thinking of larger processes, right? And some of us are thinking of like we have a candidate. And I think we kind of conflict the two and just because we have different opinions on different approaches. Doesn't mean that, like you're saying, Maggie Tai, that we're not in agreement, like, you know, if we go to the end of this process. We don't know if we're gonna be in agreement with Fred, but I think there is. Um, so I would like to vote today in what kind of process we're doing. I think we keep dancing around it and so if we can just vote and uh, so that the community can be very clear. Of uh where, the direction that we're going. So either we're gonna go with an appointment process or we're gonna go with an open hiring process. And I believe that's what we've been putting out there for all this time, but we kind of dance around it. And I, and if you don't mind, because this, uh, if I, I had a, a, uh, something I wanted to say. And partly because I feel really, I, I want to be very clear, right, in what our votes mean. And that, you know, it is not against an individual, right? And so, so I thought about it and, um, you know, and I've been reflecting on, there has been a lot of emails. Uh, that came to the board and a lot of public comments made today, uh, tonight in support of appointing Dr. Rundle as a new superintendent. And I agree with many of the assessments made and many of the points made. And I will definitely keep them in mind when I evaluate Dr. Rundle with other candidates. However, I don't think that we are at the stage of discussing the pros and cons of the candidates. And so for me, at this point, it is about our decision to choose to enter community engagement tonight. And make a hiring process, a hiring decision, based on our current knowledge of Dr. Rundle's qualification. And also somewhat based on unsubstantiated fears and concerns. Or we can choose to do our due diligence to carry out an open search process. Where the candidates, the administration, the board uh can hear the most updated concerns of the students and the community. And where we live out our district mission of thinking critically, solving problem creatively and working together collaboratively. So fundamentally, I believe that employees paid by tax dollars and who have not been elected by the public should go through an open hiring process. Where all qualified members of the public can apply. Where an open process that is fair and objective, an open hiring process free of systemic barriers. And an opening hiring process where all stakeholders are authentically engaged. So as a school board member, I am committed to creating and maintaining policy and practices that reflect the diverse needs of our students. Policy and practices that can weather extreme ideological pendulum swings. And policies and practices that are, are moving forward to a high quality and inclusive educational vision that I think we all share in. So the appointment process for me is rife with potential sub- subjectivity, is limiting. And it is a step backward from our larger system change goals of reducing barriers and increasing uh inclusivity for all students. So really, for me, the only way to be accountable to our community that elected me. And to role model what it means to live my values to the Mercer Island students whom I serve. I can only support an open hiring process for our next superintendent. So it's not about the individual, you know, of the pros and cons of Fred, so I really want people to hear that. And because I totally agree with all the emails that are coming in and the public comments made today of his many great qualification. But for me, I approach this at this moment from a system level. And so even if we vote differently right now, it is not because we are not in alignment with how we feel about our administration. I just want people to be really clear with that. Um, and not get, um, yeah, just be very clear with why and why we're voting the way we're voting.
Thank you, Tam. Um.
Yes, I'd like to comment, um, in the interest of unanimity. I'm, I, I hear everyone and, um. And I hear frankly, most importantly, Fred, and I know that he believes that um. An open search is gonna give him the most opportunity for success. Because I know that he um feels strongly that he wants to be here and that he will rise to the top. And I frankly agree with that a hundred percent. Um, I don't wanna waste time on an RFP process. Uh, I wanna pick a search firm, if, i- in the interest of unanimity, if, if you truly mean what you just said. Knowing that I'm opposed to a search, let's pick a search firm and let's get started. Because if we go through an RFP, it won't be till the middle of January that we even pick someone and then get started. So let's go, let's pick someone, let's have our, all our stuff, all our I's dotted and T's crossed. And be ready to um open up applications the first week of January and then let's get moving. So, um, the, I, I am happy to vote in support of that. I will not vote in support of dragging out an RFP, Maggie Tai, thank you for all your work, I know. I know, and, and frankly, that makes me um more comfortable with this. Is I think that you can really guide us towards the search firm. I trust your um opinion and the conversations that you've had with different search firms. But I, I don't know that our community cares about what search firm we use. I, I hear that there wants to be input and everyone coming together and feeling good about the choice. And I don't think the search firm that we choose necessarily, I mean, if we wanna have a search, I, that's fine. I, I will get on board with that, even though I still significantly question the money, but it is important to come together. But then let's do it. Vote on this, let's vote on this today and let's have a search firm picked by next week.
Let's, um, let's vote on these things separately, though, let's, let's get a motion about specifically whether we're gonna do a search. And then what the next item on the agenda is to look at the RFPs, so that's the place I think to have a discussion about our year for none.
So I make the motion that uh the school board above applaud and hold in search for the next superintendent.
Tam, don't you want a second then?
Yes, again. I was gonna let Dan go first, if it's his first.
I'm sorry, any more discussion?
I understand that you wanna break it down, but I can't vote in favor until the process for that is decided. So if, unless we decide that first, I'm gonna be abstaining. It's not a threat, I'm just letting you know I'm not comfortable voting in support of that until I know where the board's gonna fall on what, on how quickly this is gonna go. And, and when I say quickly, and I mean rushing through the search, I mean rushing through picking a search firm.
To be RFP that Maggie Tai so graciously drafted for us. Uh, I actually had a timeframe to be done around March eighteen. And, uh, you know.
Well, that was optimistic, that was, that, that was kind of like in the Far Side cartoon where they write stuff and then they say like, a miracle occurs in the middle and then they get the answer. Um, that was the hope was to be done by March eighteen.
And, and then a miracle occurs might be, you know, the board driving for that lead as well. Uh, as, as opposed to just letting the search firm draft us to that date.
So, so, um, if, if we wanna talk about these, these two issues intertwined, then, um, I actually feel very strongly that we should go through the RFP. Process, um, because I don't feel I know these search firms well enough after the brief conversation. They're all extremely charming, they're all people persons, that's why they're in the field that they're in. Um, I left each phone call going, wow, our search would be in good hands with these people and with these people and with this other person. So, um, I don't, I, I think it's a, it's, it's, um, it's only putting things out by two weeks. And it sounds like we have some other work we wanna be doing as a board during those two weeks anyway on this issue. Um, and I feel like in the interest of transparency, that so many people that have been asking for more of. It would be nice for people to be able to see the, the finalists that we're considering and to see what direction we're heading, because the, the directions are quite different. Um, Dan, I see your hand.
Isn't that all done and accepting the session, cuz we're.
No.
We can do it in a special, we can do it in a special meeting outside of.
When we're interviewing specific firms.
Usually you get down to three firms and then you interview those. That, that would be done in a public meeting, right, Erin?
I can just speak loudly in the, um. Interview the final finalists of three was the example of last time in public, which is they made essentially it was a presentation with some questions that were asked.
It, it was a special meeting that was public, so.
Correct, and, and just as within a special meeting, you just have to stay within the ambit of the identified agenda.
Yeah, okay. Dan, go ahead.
I, I feel strongly we should do an RFP. Who the search firm is matters a lot, in my opinion. Having worked with HR for hiring, uh, it's a vital importance, like what, uh, the pool of applicants are, who they're most familiar with. Also, I think like for fiscal prudence, to understand what the range of costs are, particularly because there is a question. Of how much it will cost and it being in flux somewhat because of the pandemic. And the timeline, and thank you Maggie Ty for all the hard work, uh, for the RFP. Like I thought it looked great from like the read, uh, that I did of it. I think we should proceed with it. I think the timeframe, uh, is, is, i- is well worth it. To choose like the best search firm possible.
Thank you, Dan. Tam?
And I agree Maggie Ty with your recommendation to break it down into, uh, two different, uh, votes. Whether we go for what kind of search we're going for, search or appointment, and then, um, if we're going to do an RFP or not. Uh, but tying them together, um, whether we intended to or not, shows that we're still streamlining, just streamrolling over this. Instead of we're going to commit it to this, we're going to do the best we can. And in the most, you know, like Dan says, physically responsible and expedited manner. So we will make ourselves available. But I think we have to intentionally do this with some, uh, being authentic. To make sure that this, uh, the community stay abreast and moving along with us of what is happening. So I vote for an RFP as well.
So the other, other complication is, and I was going to wait to, to say this at the meeting where we review the proposals. But I will just say it now is that, that, um, one of the search firms is someone that I have like a slight personal connection to. Basically, my husband is friends with the proprietor of this firm. And, um, I, I don't. I don't think that that disqualifies me from, um, from taking part in the decision making process or voting on it. Certainly that's up to the board. If the board wants me to recuse myself, I will. Um, I don't have any financial interest obviously in any of the firms. But I do feel like that really casts a, a weird light on me telling the board, oh, I really think you should look at these three firms. You know, if, if that happened to be one of the firms that, that was included. So another reason why we should do it in a more formal fashion.
So I'll, uh, I'll amend the motion.
Well, I, I'm still a little, I'm going to call you on what you just said. You said we should have unanimity and I made a counter proposal, knowing how I feel, so. You don't care about unanimity. It, it's something that I feel strongly about, but if there's other people that do. I mean, where, where is the, where's the hard work to get to agreement? Go ahead, go ahead and make your motion, but I'm calling you on your former statement.
No, no, I, I, I think the, uh, the question was to do an RFP or not to do an RFP. You, you, you suggested. I mean, I, I appreciate that you made, you, you made a compromise to come through an open. And then the next question then was to do an RFP or not to do an RFP. And I, 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 you know, I think the, the goal has been to try and streamline it. In terms of timing and, and interviews of the firms where we do the special meeting outside of board meetings. And so that, those are the compromises that are being made out of respect for, for, for timeline. But the, the RFP doesn't seem like it should, uh. Meaningfully hurt. Your desire to, to come along with the search. Is, does, it doesn't change in any meaningful way your desire to come along for a search.
It changes the timeline. I'm, I'm still, I'm tremendously uncomfortable with our earliest possible date, the March 18. I don't think that's good for our community. I don't think it's good for our students. I don't think it's good for our staff. In any place that we can cut that. Including how we're going to find a search firm. I'm not saying it's not important that we find the right one, but we don't have to do an RFP in this big formal process and then re- review everything. There's, there's a lot, but you know, we can talk to the districts around us. We can check their references. It, it doesn't have to be this long drag that process. That's what I object to. Because anywhere where we can cut it for the good of our students. Is where I think we should fall.
I certainly respect that, but, but from my point of view, it's, it's going to be worth it in the longer run. I think having it be like a, a open process where people can see how we're making our decision about what firm we're using. Is going to be of more value in the long run to people accepting that this has been a fair process and a clean process. And, and one that, that gives legitimacy to whoever is chosen, um, in the search process. I, I do think it's worth mentioning also, because it'll probably come up in the, in the discussions with the search firms. That, that they all mentioned that there's this sort of possible sort of off ramp to the search process, which is. At the end, if we, if we started, if we post before Christmas and we give a month for, for people to reply. If we don't get any strong candidates, the board could at that point decide to make an offer to Dr. Rundle. So, um, it's, I, I suspect we'll get at least some applicants, but they might not meet the criteria that we've set. So, um, so there's, so the March 18th date isn't the only date where we could end up with a decision that's really as possible. Do you know what I'm saying? Like there's, there's other things that could happen and we're not prejudging.
I think this is the other, the other situation we're at, please. This has been an issue for a long time. And the way we make progress is, 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 is to be RFP at this point in time.
I'm not going to comment because you don't want to hear that.
I'm, I, I, I'm listening.
I, I also don't think we're going to, we're clearly not going to get to unanimity. Can't even say it. We're clearly not going to get there at every step in the process. I mean, the goal is to have unanimity of support for our choice at the end of the process. It's like, it's not going to happen. So I would like to go ahead and vote just on this issue of whether we're going to do a search or not. And I understand if you are going to abstain from that.
I'm no longer abstaining.
Okay. Okay.
But we can call it, someone can make a motion if they want. I would think that there already was one.
There already was one. Yeah, we had a motion in a second. Okay, shall we have a vote?
Sure.
Okay. All in favor of, uh, conducting a, an open search process. Hiring a search firm, um, to choose our, to help us choose our next superintendent, please say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, that was mine. All opposed. Finny?
Nay, and it's due to the timing issue of the RFP.
Understand. Uh, and no abstentions, so that passes by a vote of four to one. Thank you. Okay, that is that. Now we talk about the RFP. Well, we already started talking about it. Um, I would welcome any feedback on it if you guys want just to look through it, um. I was kind of flying by to see my pants there. So any feedback on the timeline, on the contents?
Dan might be trying to talk.
Dan, are you speaking because you are muted if you are speaking?
Uh, no, no, I, I thought it was good.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Oh, you're a good pilot.
A good pilot?
You.
Oh. Um, I'm going to actually bring it up again. Sorry, got kicked off this computer once before. Yeah, you really wouldn't let me fly in an actual plane. Okay, well, if there are no suggestions. Can I have a motion? Suggestions?
I, um, hang on, because I, there was something that I lost confidence in. It didn't, I was looking to see if it was here. My question is, do we really? Need to leave? The application open for a month? This is superintendent hiring season. Anyone who's in the market is going to have their materials ready and will be able to send them off. I, I think two weeks is plenty of time for someone. I, I, I'm pretty darn certain that. Superintendent candidates are searching the listings, the postings every day and have their materials ready. I don't think we need to leave them a month to receive application.
We can, let's discuss that if people are comfortable with. I, I feel like two weeks is much less than the norm. Just from the other district searches that I've been looking at, we could maybe do three weeks. I see that Dan has a tempo.
Oh, sorry. Um, four weeks seemed pretty short to me and compressed. I think we should look to the guidance of the search firms that could say if that's. Too long and unnecessary, they have the expertise and knowledge and it's the reason we're hiring them. Um, or looking to hire one of them. So I think it's premature to shorten that without any knowledge of what the current market is like, obviously on other issues. Because of, again, the changed circumstances due to COVID. We've been wrong about finances. You know, maybe the timeline has been compressed. I don't know. But rather than speculate, we should go to the experts on this.
We can certainly adjust the RFP to say this date to this date range for closing the posting. TBD like based on advice from the council.
The proposed search schedule was developed by Maggie Ty. And I certainly will listen to experts, but, but this was based on what Maggie Ty wrote. And it can certainly be a question, but, um. I, I, I wish Mr. Glowitz, I'm going to need you to stop second guessing and, and implying that you're giving, that we're giving inaccurate information. Director De Souza already told you that the $150,000 was based on the prior search. And that circumstances have changed due to travel, um, and your implications are offensive. So I hope that you will move forward with that and that at Maggie Ty learned last week that, um, those numbers have changed. Lots of numbers in this world have changed. So let's move forward assuming good intent and that no one was trying to deceive anyone. Thank you.
So just getting back to the, the fascinating question, the RFP. Um, what I was basing those numbers on was partly the, the length of posting was partly that. In a perfect world, according to the search firms, they would be posting like at the beginning of January, keeping it up for a month. But because they understand that we're on a tight timeline, they were hoping to get something up in late December. Even if it's just kind of a preliminary posting, like this job is going to be posting, details will follow. Um, because that would be the soonest that they would kind of be able to get things going. So we're, we're already, like, believe me, I kind of like compressed the timeline wherever it was possible to compress. But I haven't seen any other search where less than a month of posting time has been opened. So again, I'm super happy to modify that to say closed job posting between January 14th and January 28th. You know, to be determined. Does that, would that be better? Would you be okay with that?
I would, because it's just a proposal and we're looking for feedback.
Yeah. That's fine. Do we want to say final selection is May, March 3rd to March 18th?
Maggie Ty?
Yes, go ahead, Tam. Tam, your hand is up and Dan, go ahead, Tam.
Um, I think this is a good draft and I really appreciate you doing the initial work for this. And as any rough draft, we are right now talking about, uh, what makes sense for our process. And if we're committed to this process, I keep inviting us, go back to how are we doing as an authentic, you know, process? And so in all of the work that we do, the, the, if we are just putting out there for two weeks. Then we're basically, we're saying that we value an open search, but we really don't want anybody to apply. Because it's really Thanksgiving and Christmas. And so I do agree with Dan that if we're going to hire a search firm, then we need to utilize the expertise to see how they guide us. That's why we're hiring them. And like, this is a good draft to kind of give us a kind of a range. But during that month while people are applying is also a good opportunity for us to connect with our community. To start getting question, more questions, just kind of understand what their vision is, kind of set up, kind of meeting times. And so there's a lot of things we can do during that month while we're waiting. But for me, uh, anything less than a month is really not, um. It's kind of not going against with our commitment to doing this process. And also, you know, I, I hope that when we say.
We're having you to jump up. We're having a technical difficulty.
Linking over here on the.
Sorry, one sec.
Sorry, I don't know.
Okay, say something.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
No, so I, I'm really just advocating, uh, that we are intentional with our work and that we, this is an opportunity. For us to show our community and our students of how intentional we are. And that we're taking this seriously and that we really want the best candidate for our school district. And so if there's any way that we need to do our due diligence, then we need to do it. Um, and so I would recommend just to listen to, you know, and it's not like we listen to them blindly. We will get there, be guided by them and then we still have a conversation to see what's comfortable with us. And then in the end, I, I really also, if we're going to talk about assuming best intention, I really, uh, I really ask that we all do that. And not like question one and not the other. So I, I think that, you know, um. Yes, I'm just going to put it out there. If we're going to assume best intention, then I hope that we all start to practice that.
Okay. We don't have to be. I, I guess we don't have to be super specific in the RFP about the timeline. It, it's there really that those dates are there purely for the purpose of, um, of the search firms to understand our sense of urgency. And kind of what we're hoping for. That doesn't bind the district to anything. We can have the, the posting be longer, shorter, alternate Saturdays, you know, whatever, whatever we want. Um, and just to be clear, it wouldn't be posted until, it was the, the goal of posting at the end of year is just to, to let people know that this job is out there. And that we're doing a search and that it's open. And then hopefully in January, they would be submitting their applications because everyone deserves a, a holiday, especially hardworking school administrators. So, um, I guess I'm, I'm wondering whether we want to. We don't have a motion yet on this, but whether, whether there's somebody, do we? Did someone make a motion on that? I don't think so.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I just want to make a motion.
I move we submit the proposed RFP. To the various sites our P's told you.
Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Um, okay, now we can dismiss it. Do people want to propose to amend those dates or do we want to just vote on it as is? And just make clear that, that the dates obviously are, I mean, it's normal. This is just a ballpark estimate kind of thing.
I think if the, uh, search firms told us we could get done something sooner, we would take it sooner.
Yeah.
And actually that happened the last time around. The last time around, we thought we needed an interim. I foolishly said that in public and then the search firm came back and said, oh, if you don't, we'll get this done.
Right. No.
Any other discussions?
Do our student reps want to chime in on this at all or? We're getting kid bottoms. They're listening. Does anyone else have any other comments or should we go ahead and vote? Okay. Uh, all in favor of. Adopting this RFP, putting out this RFP. Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, Finny? Ever sorry, are you abstaining? Oh, sorry, different. Um.
I, I vote on.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, okay, uh, that's five to zero, no, no nays and no abstentions. Thank you. And I believe. And I believe that is it. Is that right? That's our full agenda. Um. Have a motion to adjourn. Oh, wait, wait. Before we before we adjourn, since I have everyone here, can we just take a moment to look at the dates for the that are on the RFP for meetings because it would be way more efficient to actually just talk about this with everyone here. Um. So the proposals will come in on December 8th and then would, I guess the question is, is do we we would we would do our initial screening on December 9th? We have a meeting on December 9th. That gives everybody one day to review the RFPs. Is that too is that too fast? Should we schedule another meeting for December 10th?
Are you suggesting that we extend our meeting on the 9th or do that as part of our meeting?
Um, do it as part of our meeting. So the question is, do we want to do it as part of our meeting or do we want to have a separate meeting?
We just do it as a separate meeting.
Okay. Shoot, I should have done this before we approved it. And someone is booping. I don't know.
I think.
Oh, sorry. Everyone ignored the boots. Okay.
Well, either that or Mike. Yeah, see.
And and then um interviews on December 14th. I just want to make sure everyone like in town, for example, or if they're out of town, they'll be able to zoom. Is is there anyone that has trouble with attending a meeting via Zoom or in person on the 14th of December? I'm I'm looking like, no, okay. Um, and then if we have to an additional meeting on the 15th of December. It's possible that we we could just do the interviews and then decide at that meeting right afterwards, what firm raising, if people would prefer that. Just I I'm I'm everything I know about this comes from like creepily stalking other districts search processes. So it seems like most people do the three interviews and then the next day they have another meeting, like a brief meeting where they make their final selection. Are we okay with that plan? If it if it means we're going to meet on the 14th?
Yes.
Please, the if you look back on the timeline for 2017, yeah, three firms were all invited into one meeting.
Yeah.
And it appears that I think that was March 29th, I believe. And then it appears that um either at that meeting or at the next meeting, the board made a decision.
Yeah.
Um, and then the other thing I want to remind you of is you do have a meeting on the 16th, which is the Mercer Island High School site visit.
Yep.
So why don't you make sure that everyone's aware of that meeting and it's on your calendars as you start to add more things in.
Yes. In the morning, right? Yeah, 7:30.
Yes, it's seven, 7:15 actually to 11 is generally when that meeting runs, I will say, and I think Director De Souza can confirm that there have been other times after a site visit where we had lunch together and actually then went into a study session or some other meeting to and I know Director Lurie can can confirm that as well. So that's a possibility.
Okay, okay. So basically, everyone's either in town or otherwise available for those dates around like the 9th, 14th, 15th and it's the actual time and date that it'll happen is TBD, but just wanted to make sure before we committed to something that we couldn't actually do. Okay, we're good. With that, if no one has any additional comments, David? Nope, if no one has additional comments?
I don't. I just ask that we make a decision as a board that, you know, absent quarantining, that we either all be in person or all be vising. My my opinion is that is I I I just think it's most professional to be on the same medium.
Yeah, we have also had input from a from a district parent who commented that it's very difficult to follow the organelles when it's we're all just like a bunch of little talking heads wearing masks. Um, so that's why I logged in this time so that people can see my face is moving when I'm talking. So these people will know who's talking. I don't know. Um, yeah, I'm willing to be all in person or all on Zoom.
Maggie Ty, can I have a response to that?
Yes, I can.
I do agree that it's in the best case scenario, we can be all in one or the other. But given the time that we're at right now, and if we say that we're committed to reducing barriers and we're doing an online, if we have an online options for those who can't doing when we when we kind of make judgment about, you know, why people don't show up or show up. It it kind of creates this really implicit culture of expectation, which I think could be damaging. So during this time, if we still have health concerns, I don't think we should ask people why they can or cannot show up in public. It is kind of an unfortunate part of our time where as we're shifting out to, you know, being in this hybrid model. But so I'm just pushing for the fact that, of course, I would love to be present when I can. But then when I can't, then I'm going to be on Zoom and I hope that the board members do not see as a sign of disrespect or do not see it as any other things than that this is the best option for me. Either physically or mentally, emotionally, whatever it is. So it doesn't. So I don't think we should ask each other and question a rationale why we are not in person because if online being through Zoom is an option, then I think we should respect and embrace the, you know, the different ways we can reduce barriers for people to participate.
Tam, I, for that very reason, is why I suggested that we make a decision to do the same medium. I think it's very difficult to, as as someone who's being interviewed, to be speaking to both the screen and to people. If your position is that you don't want to be in person, which is fine, then then go ahead and say so. But you know, I I hear I hear between the lines, that's why I said in person or Zoom. So there is that option. And if you are not comfortable doing in person, um, then I I I frankly know that. And so I would like us all to decide that we're going to do Zoom then. Um, I I would like to be in person. I think that we have mitigation strategies to keep us safe, but but I understand that not everyone agrees with that. That's okay. So then let's choose Zoom. But I think it's very, I think it's asking a lot of people to present something in this situation.
Um, what it can I just ask Donna, what what is the situation as far as the date is concerned? Because I feel like there was a point at which it was possible for us to come back in kind of hybrid mode or in person and that there was some pressure, like positive pressure for us to do that.
There are, um, the governor's emergency mandates are are still in place. I know that as you probably heard as well, there is some pressure on the governor to start at least coming out to create some timelines for when those mandates may be lifted based on data as in vaccination rates or even mitigation strategies in place. But the the my understanding is the current method of board meeting is that yes, you could absolutely be meeting in person following the date because you're in our school. We have to follow all the mitigation strategies at school. But that we do have to have the Zoom option. And I I do believe, and this is just by querying other superintendents, that most districts are having the Zoom option being realized by public, but that the boards are able to meet in their boardroom. And then having Zoom option for public allows for less occupation numbers within the biblical space.
So this was not on our agenda for today and I'd love to discuss this at a later meeting. Um, I think there's there's access issues for the public and then it's a question of what we as a board want to do. So let's add it to a future agenda to discuss what we want to do.
Yeah, because this is a special meeting. You just need to stay within your agenda.
Yeah, yeah, we need to stay within our agenda. So thank you for raising it though. Um. Yeah, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor of adjourning this meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. That passes by a vote of five to zero. No means no extensions. Thank you very much. It is 7:45.
I was only my, I was only suggesting in this interview, not.
Oh, in general?
No, I was not. No, I was very specific.
Okay, sorry. I heard this general. I must be rather in Zoom mention that role firstly. I hate talking through a mask.
These interviews, I think I think it's asking a lot of people. I mean, I think it's.
I mean, I think the uh search firms will be in Zoom anyway.
Yeah. Oh, for these interviews, yeah, they'll be.
So we should all do it in Zoom.
Well, that was my suggestion.
Yeah, sorry. I heard it.
Clearly, I'm just, everything I say is going to be disregarded. So that'll be.
Hello, now we're recording.
Really? Because that's what I thought. That's what I said. I don't think I was on. Except for the purpose of these.
I said we have a purpose of these interviews.
No, you're right.
Yeah, yeah.
So how do I, hold on, hold on.